President.
Mr. President.
Here.
My honor.
Here.
First item on the agenda tonight is going to be approval of minutes from the previous meeting.
I might come up to you.
Add motion, add set constitution. Ball count, man of the field.
All right.
Commissioner Duff.
All right.
Commissioner Pritchett.
All right.
Commissioner Duff.
All right.
My honor. One quick switch here on the agenda. I'm going to bring Chris to get the audit report before we move on.
Mayor, Commissioner. Do have a copy of the June thirty, two thousand and eighteen audit. Want to make the professional courtesy extended to myself and staff during the audit process. This report includes quite a few items. I want to be as brief and concise as possible in what we have bottomed with. Agenda denied. You want to take a look at the audit report section, just look at the table. I'll just want to briefly describe what's in the audit itself. Just talk about other items. The audit presentation, the board's broken down into nine different sections really in this table. We've got our auditor's opinion letter. Then management's discussion analysis. Down the table contents. You have basic financial statements, your government-wide financial statements, and then we have the fund financial statements. Turn over to the next page. We're marking part of the audit is the notes of financial statements. And accompanying that would be the, what we call the required supplementary information. Page sixty-seven through seventy, and then supplementary information, which we also give an opinion on, which is page seventy-one through, I'll wait to page eighty-nine. In addition to the opinion letter, we also issue a report on internal control. Couple things if you want to go over to get the defendant's opinion letter. We give an opinion on the...
Which one is that first page?
That would be the next page, that would be table content. We give opinion on, five opinions, Mr. Dally. Opinion on governmental activities, on business-type activities, major funds, general funds, and then all the remaining fundamental information. And then also the notes of financial statements. Couple things important to point out, responsibility of financial statements is management. Our responsibility as auditors is to issue opinion on these financial statements with our standards and also governmental standards. It's important to note also that the audit process includes judgment by us. And we look at evidence and announce the disclosures that's in the financial statements also. We look at internal control of the city when we're determining our audit procedures. It's often a little pattern there. With the audit procedures, all things we perform, we believe provide evidence of the issue and render opinion. On page two, we give what's called a modified opinion, which basing statements, financial statements presented for this year, June thirty, eighteen, present fairly financial condition of City Hazard for that period of time. One change, excuse me, in accounting principle that's presented in this audit report, audit presentation, is information on post-employment benefit plan. That's the civil gas and settlement five. The rest of the information there speaks about the required supplementary information and other information that we do render opinion. And also refers to the whole report package, audit report, the entire audit report package. Any questions? Here's some things that, just as before, I know we don't have a lot of time to go into detail. But in basic financial statements, some of the things you may want to look at is on page fourteen, page sixteen. That's reconciliation of government-wide financial statements to county financial statements. Things that is not on budget basis, fund basis, which could be your fixed assets, your long-term debt service, and also pension information. Included in the basic financial statements is the fiduciary information, which includes the police and fire pension fund also. As I mentioned previously, it's important to note, the notes of financial statements has quite a bit of information that supports the basic financials. That begins on page twenty-eight and moves down to page sixty-five. Some information that thinks very important, broken down, note, first note, it says, encompasses the first eight to ten pages. Describe the reporting entity, what is included, what is excluded, has been considered each entity, and also a significant policy of the city. Pages thirty-nine through forty-nine, that includes retirement plan information. And really important too, as I mentioned earlier about fixed assets and long-term debt. We have presented there schedules of the city's long-term fixed assets for local government, voluntary funds, and also long-term debt in detail.
What page is that, Chris?
That would be page fifty through fifty-seven. Page fifty through fifty-seven.
Within terms of long-term debt and kind of short-term, for the municipality, normally it would be like one year or less in short-term.
One year or less, correct.
Is that, was it, I thought maybe it was three years or less.
One year or less is how it's presented.
Okay.
That's correct. So we have current, current debt is presented one year or less in the application. Any other question? Another item we report is a change in beginning that position, probably this new gas and required there in seventy-five, that's down on page sixty-five. Move on down the line. We have the required supplemental financial information. Two of the things that's included in that, two items, budget actual for general fund, this account, beginning on page sixty-seven, and then also required pension information. Why do the information on the fish report? And you'll see, if you go into the detail in the financials, in the basic financial statements, they say we see some huge liabilities that are reflected, that are really non-cash liabilities that's based on actuarial assumptions that require for guys like the municipalities and other governmental agencies to report. Had a couple other things I wanted to mention. With no single what, it expenditure related to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our single off. We also have a new reported package, a report on government audit. There's no material non-compliance noted, and we have a repeat finding of previous reporting periods regarding deficiencies in the financial reporting and report presentation. That's regarding adjusting entries, presentation classification, just because of significant adjustments that's made in the reporting process.
Chris, if I could ask, when you, when Chris I read the previous article, what threshold, I guess, what does significant represent? You say significant, is that required?
That's audit judgment.
Okay.
It is audit judgment, and we felt it was significant enough that it need to be included in this part of the report.
Okay. And but it has been a binding, at least the previous three times, correct?
And management understands, you know, there's been some transition, and so there's a new financial accounting software, so.
And well, and even to that end, this is audit of six thirty of two thousand and eighteen. Our current city manager, our current chief financial officer were not in their respective positions at that time.
Any other questions? And there's a couple, there's one layer emphasizes the significant deficiency, and the other layer is communication, where it's just emphasizing the use of estimates, the use of judgment on preparing financial statements. That's one key out of the audit communication. Questions?
I have a question I have, when I was looking at receivables, especially the things like water, on that audit, she wrote about two hundred thousand dollars. And then kind of throughout the, the report, I guess, the revenues or fees generated from water, like three point eight million. If it hits the receivables, is that counted as income?
It is counted as income, because the right of fund is considered a cruel basis, so seeing the use as the charge hits, that's income. That's why, that's another, that's a good point, because we have established an allowance and estimate for the right of funds for utility funds.
So, so yeah, even though, so essentially, as we read through it, or if anybody else would read through it, even if it says three point eight million, that is, that would be assuming one hundred percent collection, which is not, because it's through so many of the receivables, it wasn't...
Yeah, because it's considered a receipt.
Yeah.
Anything else?
So overall, we did it twice.
I'm sorry.
So overall, the audit.
Yes, one more, I'm sorry. Obviously, in the previous three audits, talking about kind of year-end reconciliation issues, what, what do you see as best practices? Because I think the commission has essentially presented this information once annually by statute, and is best satisfied by this audit. Like, would it be better to present, kind of, not, not this detailed financial, but some level of it on a, I guess, a more regular basis, whether it be quarterly or so, that might help?
That's something that we have discussed even in our exit conference with management. We provide them this item that is a great best practice, and ways to improve internal control operating efficiency, and they're working on that.
Can you detail some of those?
Sorry, some of the items.
What are the recommendations?
You know, some of the items actually, I should, I should... Obviously, very close, which is in part of the financial reporting package. Fixed asset, maintenance is something to talk about, ensuring that there is good detail, good comparison to your insurance records. Ensuring that budgeting is used as an effective monitoring tool, in the words that you're providing and presenting it in such detail that you can actually gauge and see what's happening on basis. Ensuring that departmental personnel have adequate understanding of account code, make sure that the purposes, managers keep the right gun, keep the place where it needs to go. Just ensuring that payroll, the payroll procedures, ensuring that people that needs to know, have knowledge of differences in a different kind of pay, because there is a lot of different types of pay, and there's pay, incentive pay, same to that nature. Ensuring the city maximizes, maximizes threat of payroll and occupational taxes. One of the things that I kind of referred me to, some fiduciary reports, current relations, pension fund, ensuring that we have a more recent actuary report, an audit report, not loving to imply.
I know, Carlos, you said, you know, trying to find a source for that.
Yes, try, try, yeah, try, try. And just monitoring deposits at the focal levels, make sure they're all active, localized, having a good handle on interfund transfers. That's just some of the things to talk about, the best practices. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right.
I need a quarter to break seven dollars.
I'll make one, please, ten dollars.
I'm sure you all can hear me, I talk to the workers and the rest of the people here, so the way this is going to go is the ordinance is presented, and then we're going to open the floor to the public to comment. If you do comment, we want you to keep in mind that we want to set a time limit, that way the mayor and the commissioners, they want everybody to be able to be heard. So if you do want to speak after the ordinance, you're going to have an opportunity to do so, but please make sure that that's limited, so everyone will have an opportunity to hear. Okay? We're also going to win with the conversation as to the Sunday sale ordinance for twenty minutes.
I'm here today presenting the second reading for the Sunday alcohol sales, that's number two on the agenda, it was taken out of order. Last time we met, I had presented some changes to the alcohol ordinance, that's chapter one-one-one, and more specifically, chapter one-one point four-zero, entitled Hours, Section A and Section B. The Section A speaks to the allowance of alcohol to be sold on Sundays, the type of alcohol that can be sold, where the alcohol can be sold, and the time period in which it can be sold. Since our first reading, that has been amended very briefly, and I can go over that. We had stated the change is specifically as a time period. After some discussion, it has come to me through discussion with the commission and the mayor, that we would like to present Sunday alcohol sales of distilled spirits, wine, and malt beverages, and that that may be sold at retail in the city. That means packaged goods and in restaurants. And the hours between one P M. on Sunday and midnight. The reason that midnight was changed, we had previously stated an earlier hour, is on occasion, there's events held, special events in the city, that may not be over at an earlier hour, and New Year's Eve may fall on a Sunday. So as it reads, one-one-one point four-zero, Section A, it states that except as otherwise mandated by state law, the times and hours during which distilled spirits, wine, and malt beverages may be sold at retail in the city are hereby established to be the hours of eight A M. and before one A M. on prevailing time on any day except Sunday. And on Sunday, distilled spirits, wine, and malt beverages may be sold at retail in the city between the hours of one P M. and midnight, or twelve A M., if the establishment has a Sunday sales license. That is a license which must be purchased aside from their normal alcohol sales license, and at this point in time, that is three hundred dollars per annum. In section, the same section, subsection B, have struck some language talking about when polls, when election polls, if there's any sales during that time. We have just struck the language that accepted out Sunday sales. So in the City of Hazard, we will not have the sales, it's during polling hours, with exception to Section B. All that was struck there was the language of Sunday. So basically, we are in our second reading for the acceptance of the changes in sale of alcoholic beverages, Section one-one-one point four-zero, Hours, subsection A and subsection B.
So the fee was already a part of the, the ordinance, correct?
The fee has been, it's, it's a statutory fee set by the state, and it's in a chart further in the, up in the...
At the beginning of the ordinance.
Yes, it's already set. We, we had it placed in there, just a cut and paste from the statute. Any questions from the commission?
Only question, I guess, would be relative to effectiveness if passed, would it just, could it seem like it's to that end, so just if it's passed, it becomes effective immediately?
We, it becomes effective, I have to post notice for the statute in the local newspaper, that has to run at least for two weeks.
Well, yeah, they have the choice, because it's not meant for...
And that's one thing I'd like to mention, it's a choice in which the establishment makes.
Right.
It's not that every restaurant may, has to sell on Sunday, if they choose to, they have the ability to do so. Same with packaged goods. Any other questions before we open it to any discussion? And if, if there was any discussion that would like to be had, if you want to come and have a comment, please come to the podium. Would anybody like to have any comment or discussion?
Pastor Karen Campbell, here in Hazard. And I think the message that we've been sending by being ordinance would be that Sunday is no longer sacred. To us, Sunday is sacred, and we feel like that this, I'm speaking against this ordinance, because we're sending a bad message to our community.
My name is Emily Hudson, I'm pastor, I'm by Christian fellowship. And the one that reminded me is I was getting my house coming with me about a word that I remember, Tennessee commissioners in two thousand and twelve, September the seventeenth. And I don't think any of you were seeing commissioners at that time, and, but that word is supposed to be in the records. And when I think about that word, and it's what I've made a ruin for God in the city. And I think that, as Pastor Karen had said, it was Sunday. We need honor, honor in Sunday, and everybody, every, every other day, and for one day, just one day. But I can not, not say anything, because if I don't, I would be dishonoring my God. So I have to say anything, and then say, then I would be opposed to it, simply because it doesn't honor him. And I would like for the, go back and look at the records to find that word, because it is a word forgotten in the city. And I think that would be the honor of word. Thank you.
Pastor Jill, Pastor Jill, that is our worship center near town. I want to say I appreciate you giving us the opportunity just to, to speak, the mayor, all the commissioners. I respect you, you have a great task in front of you, to run the city, and I understand that. But I have a couple of concerns with alcohol sales on Sunday, that I'll share with you, then I'll be that way. One is where I am in town, and we love our location, but through the week, we already get several that are wandering off the streets that have been drinking. And, you know, they're naturally, they're wanting money to buy something else, and so my concern is if it's available on Sunday to them, that maybe even more, which, sure, they're coming to the right place, I suppose, to get help, but we find oftentimes, that's not the case. They're, they're wanting to give another drink. And then my second concern is the sales beginning at one o'clock, that's usually about the time all of the churches get out for lunch, and we assemble at the local restaurants. And if you'll notice on Sunday, that's usually the biggest crowd out in the restaurants, and our children are going to be there, which, you know, I understand if we go out there on Saturday or Friday, we're subject to that, but can't we have one day that we don't have to be worried about taking our families out to one of the local restaurants in the city there? You know, scripture teaches us to remember the Sabbath day, he behold, and that's all that we're asking, is just one day, and maybe we can go out without the worry of, of people getting loud or obnoxious around our children on Sunday. And I think that God blesses us if we honor the Sabbath day, and that is my caution, I think.
I'd like to say something. My name is Peggy, I live here in Hazard, and just a few weeks ago, we had a break-in on our street, in fact, it was at my house, in a car. And their Hazard Police Department responded, thank God, and caught the man that broke into the car on my property. He was drinking, he was drugged up, and on my street, there's a lot of drugs, there's a lot of alcohol, common street, and it's a bad street, anybody will hate it. And I think alcohol sales will increase crime on that street, it will increase crime here in town, and even a restaurant owner here in town, even stating that if he sold alcohol, he may make a little profit, but may lose the Sunday crack. And I will be honest and upfront, I don't think any Christian will walk into any restaurant that's selling alcohol on Sunday, and I know my family won't. And I just want to say, our Bible says, remember the Sabbath day and keep it holy. And all you up there voting on this, if you go to church on Sunday, you go look at your pastor in the face and say, I voted on this. That's something important to think about, thank you.
Does anyone else?
Um, probably half the people here are thinking that we won't pay it out, it's not really, it should pay, it should have revenue for the city. And if we need the money, so alcohol, so, so, revenue here in Hazard, I believe that's what we need to do, we need to have it. So, um, I, I'll be able to do the favor, but I can do the favor, I'm just trying to tell them that, thank you.
Well, I got a question about taxes and stuff, are you on taxes? It's simple, I just not understand.
It's a, we are currently, it'd be taxes... It's a, we are currently, it'd be taxed just like our current, current sales at the current rate. Just like any other tax that we're doing right now. It's at three percent, the regulatory license fee for the APC. And any type of alcohol sales, whether it's Sunday or the other day, is taxed at the three percent.
It's only changed that once a year, about?
You can only change it once a year per the beginning of the budget period.
Right, and it has to be at the certain time?
Right, we set it in December of eighteen, so it won't be until next December, if you change this, mate.
But any restaurant, as Lori said, you know, they have the choice, as the lady referenced in the crowd, you know, they have that choice to purchase the additional license, and then taxes go against that as a credit, you know, but at a minimum, it'd be a three hundred dollar fee.
Correct.
Why don't we set the times as the other cities in the round?
This is the same time that I'm not studying this?
Oh, neither, Pikeville, other cities, with the two in the morning. I mean, if you want to do it, why not do it?
I don't know, I'm still, I'm a little warm.
Are you speaking to the entirety of the week, sir? And I'm sorry, I'm leaning around, sorry.
Yeah, sir, I mean, you know, I mean, if you voted in, you know, why limit the time? I mean, the other towns had to limit the time, like, if you go to Laune, it's a dry county.
Pardon, is it, which, is the?
Bonn, Pikeville, Coal Run, Bell Creek, they're all, they're all, they're in the dry county, but they all sell on Sunday. And then like, what about your sales on Sunday, Saturday night, where you borrow and stuff? You know, they stay open two, three in the morning, all these big cities.
So you're saying Pikeville and Laurel County are dry counties?
Yes, sir.
If I may, there's a distinction, it's a, there's a distinction at law, and it's Kentucky state law. If you have a county that's wet, and you're the city within the wet county, you can, you may not sell until one PM. So that's where the one PM comes in.
We're talking about the night before.
The night before?
The Saturday night.
The Saturday night, it's, it's not on the agenda.
It's Sunday, we have to close at midnight. It's always been, it's always been, there never was for us selling after twelve o'clock on Saturday night. All the other cities sell at two and three in the morning.
But that, that has to be a separate issue?
It can't be on this.
It can't be on this?
It's Sunday, it's Sunday sales, it can't be a separate issue.
Well, it hasn't been brought up for me to address it. I don't know if the commission wants to address it.
The hours that you're opening past midnight on Saturday are still Saturday hours, even though it's on Sunday?
No, it isn't, sir.
That's my understanding.
No, it's not.
No, we have to, I mean, I've been a bar mess twenty years. You know, I've tried to get the city commission for years to change laws, and everyone would, but, you know, I mean, I'm not for the Sunday sales, but if you're going to do it, do it right. I mean, Lex didn't, your back goes Lex, if you know, let's go up at three o'clock on Saturday.
Go to Pikeville, let's go up at two o'clock. So I mean, if you're going to pass the law, why not pass the law on Saturday instead? Well, don't you know what I'm talking about? I mean, it's...
No, you're saying, yeah, you're saying, you don't want to...
I know what you're talking about, this first ordinance was just selling alcohol on Sundays.
Yeah, well, that is Sunday.
I understand that, but we can't change the thing on the first ordinance. I mean, you can put this on the next item on the agenda for Dr. Nye.
I ask a question?
Sure. Why can't this be put to the vote?
It's the, if the city has already been voted wet, then the hours and days of sale is held to the mayor and the commission. That's Kentucky law.
Well, I mean, but he can still come from the next court, he can do that.
Of course, we can address it. We're limited to what we have on the agenda in this section, what we had discussed prior. Would anybody else like to have a comment?
Sounds like your mind's already made up that you're going to pass it regardless of what anybody has to say.
That's right, I agree.
Anything else? I'll reintroduce the second reading of ordinance 111, alcoholic beverages, section point four zero, hours, subsection A and subsection B. I had read it into the record prior, and I'm asking for a vote.
Can I have a motion? I make a motion. I have a motion, Mr. Plank, I have a second. I have a second, Commissioner Donka, Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Ford, Commissioner Ford, Commissioner Bruton.
It's fine. Hold. It's fine, because I have a time here, I'm a citizen.
Next item on the agenda, number four, we have one to assist the city. I bring for you the formative, while the couch, as my assistant said, while it's handled by utilities for the last few months here, you were much done handling all the utilities for it. Questions for the citizens?
I'll make a motion if it's one of them.
Have a motion, I have a second. Number four, Mr. Plank, four, Commissioner Mitchell, four. Next item on the agenda, number five, bid open to the state. On the final stretch of the police department right now, getting them to pitch their new building, we took two bids, the materials and installation of seven materials for that building. Also, we took two bids, installation of lighting and lighting materials for the building. And number three, we took bid, the materials and installation of floor for the building. We did receive a bid for the first two, and the third one, we received a bid with a ten million dollars. We want to have two bids, one for each of the first two, if we can't contract, I'd recommend that we accept those two bids. I have a motion.
Before that, I'm sorry, Derek, so what do we do on item three, if no bid was presented?
On item three, we can do a new bid, where we did take the bids, and if we have it here coming, we can ask right back out and go for the next one. How far back is that? Chief?
It will back you forward on the bids.
We are real close on it, because if we have finished the building, just like some other landstations outside.
Basically, what we wanted to do is just keep the existing tile in there and match up. They can do it, they can.
And then they have to do the outside too, right?
I've discussed that with Carson, what we decided to do on that is to get one of those things to just smooth down that concrete, because we thought there was an issue with that first, but we're talking to the contractor down there, he said it looks fine, they just take things, move it down, because there was always an issue there before, with people slipping and breaking elbows and that kind of stuff on that tile, so we'll just stick the concrete on there, I think would be better.
Yes, they might have to change the vision of the right corner, because we probably have some construction force. He came in and took that old loose tile that's been there for, ever since McDonald's was there. He took that, and it approved of the minutes, like, I was in there today looking at the building.
Karen's wife, she's not a sick bear, are you?
They're covered up with their mouth.
It's like the marching, first march.
It's a march. He'd likely be about a third of the march, we would have to do some rest. Twenty-four hour days. Absolutely, I take it with it. If you get a change coat on and swap move while they're working, it's going to be a humbling situation.
And then they move that into the town too. You get five, four of them, try it.
Well, if you're like access, people want to, it's not like they're accessing.
So we're wrapped right now, we've got one entrance, one exit. Officers, officers safety wise, that's going to be all that, parking, tremendous, to better handicap access to the building, which we don't have now, we're wrapped, so.
Hundred percent, yes.
I'll say I said it's out.
I'll say.
Have a sense, Rollup, four, Mr. Plank, four, Mr. Mitchell, four, Mr. Bruton, hold. Next item on the agenda is going to be the update on Bobby's, the only thing we have on that is Mr. Kew was the sixty-eight police in board, and he resigned from that, so we need to do that better. Next item, Lori.
As I mentioned in our last meeting, the franchising to the solid waste within the city of Hazard is Rumpy. And there had previously been a debate and some issue with the collection of residential garbage within the city. Rumpy had stated that the city of Hazard was in arrears approximately a hundred thousand dollars with the sale of residents, with collection of residential garbage. The city disagreed with that. Prior contract language had stated that the city of Hazard had named the amount of residential units using garbage service within the city of Hazard to be around between fifteen hundred and fifteen fifty residents. And through our discussion with Rumpy, we have reached an agreement, and this agreement is presented to the commission. As stated in the last meeting, Rumpy was, has, was interested in the city of Hazard doing what I consider a budget billing, where every month, the city pays Rumpy a certain fee for a separate number of households, regardless of, you know, the, it's just a number. And then the city actually builds for the solid waste collection, gets the money in, and just gives Rumpy their, their set dollar amount a month. And what we had reached an agreement, and the agreement is such that Rumpy will, they will wipe away and state the city is not in arrears, and that the city of Hazard will agree to make a monthly payment for, or an annual payment, I should say, for one thousand five hundred and twenty-five residential units. At this, at last count, the city of Hazard had one thousand five hundred and forty-two water meters to residential units, so this is actually under the amount that we're actually servicing, and Rumpy is actually picking up garbage at around one thousand seven, seven hundred and ninety-seven locations. So in my opinion, this is a pretty great deal, for getting a lot of collection without having to go through the process of, and the manpower of figuring out exactly where they're collecting and things of that nature. We are going to still work on the list, we're still working on water meter list, and making sure that we're billing correctly, but as a resolution, to save us time and money, we've agreed to that number of one thousand five hundred and twenty-five residents. That's actually lower than what our contract says.
So that's roughly the same amount that we bill out a month anyway, so this is almost like it's a thirteenth month, essentially.
Correct. And we are paying...
Paying a monthly installments.
Right, paying installments. Annually, it's twenty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars. That's based upon our residential rate of sixteen dollars and fifty-six cents, so it's a little over two thousand dollars a month. And we would start that beginning March twenty nineteen, and we pay that the twentieth day of the month. And then if there's a modification throughout the year, we have, biannually, we can let Rumpy know if we've increased or decreased the number of households by ten. Ten residents have left, ten residents have moved in, we can do that twice a year. And then again, Rumpy has forgiven, passed due amount, and start off with a clean slate.
So have we paid a franchise fee before? Is this, is this amount, I know the number that we're accounting for, the fifteen twenty-five, but has there been a separate franchise fee before, or not?
What we do, yes, there's always been a franchise fee. That, that's how they get their money. And we, they take eighty percent, we get twenty percent of the money we're going to put in, the money we collect. And we don't pay them unless we collect the money, so it's not like we're outputting our monies in the bank. So this way, they'll know they're going to get a set amount every month.
Whether we collect that bill?
Correct, but they're...
Or we go into, they're accounting one.
We're already, it's all, that's all the...
Can we get that to the business card?
We're, we have to amend the ordinance.
We don't want to take anything else over, that's what we want this.
That's in the, that's in the works. But we have to do an amendment to the ordinance.
I guess, well, okay, we'll help it.
Yeah. So I'm presenting this to the commission tonight to approve the signature of this residential billing addendum, where there is no modification of our ordinance, the only modification is to the contract in which we had signed with Rumpy effect of January first, twenty sixteen. And the modification is that the city of Hazard will be making a set payment of a franchise fee for the residential collection and disposal service for solid waste in the city of Hazard, and we're paying an annual amount of twenty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars in twelve equal monthly payments of two thousand eighty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents by the twentieth day of each month, beginning March twenty nineteen. And that rate may fluctuate depending on if the residential rate goes up or goes down. There's going to be a modification of residents, if there's a change either plus or minus in ten residents, we can do that twice a year. And then any past due amount prior to March first, twenty nineteen, that Rumpy is saying the city of Hazard owes for any residential collections, has hereby been forgiven. Need a motion? Need a motion?
A motion, I think, I have a second. Rollup, Commissioner two, four, Mr. Mitchell, four, Mr. Bruton, four, Mayor Moll, four. Next item on the agenda, number five, number eight, amendment to ordinance chapter thirty-five, personnel policies.
As we stated at the last meeting, the first meeting of twenty nineteen, the city attorney and I are going to pick through the city of Hazard COVID ordinances and make amendments as need be. This has been an amendment to me that's been a long time coming, and it feels so good to present it tonight. For chapter thirty-five, personnel policies and procedures, there is a change in section thirty-five point zero one, where the personnel policies and procedures manual shall be adopted, and that adoption is procedural manual stated, the administrative personnel policies and procedure manual, that's for the city of Hazard, it was effective August seventh, two thousand, revised August thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, and that manual shall supersede any and all previous versions. The rest of the ordinance remains the same, and actually, that's the ordinance in its entirety. So basically, we're changing the policy procedure manual to the manual that we actually use. So I will ask for a motion. Thank you.
Second, Commissioner Steel, Rollup, Mr. Steel, four, Mr. Bruton, four, Mr. Mitchell, four, Mr. Bruton, four, Mayor Moll, four.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, this department hiring for school resource officer. We began a process a few months back in trying to get a school resource officer into each of the city schools, T-Bound and WCTD, that work at the procedure there. Do you have any other?
We had ties during the month of December, we only had one applicant apply, that was Tim Eagle, very qualified, twenty-plus years of experience with Kentucky State Police, and had previously done the same job in the same location with Prairie County Sheriff's Department. So he's the only one that applied, I would recommend that we hire him for that position.
Is someone, will he be promoted to school?
He'll be doing wobbly tail and...
He's already doing it.
Yes, he's doing it part-time right now.
Will, I'm sorry, will Steve continue to be at the high school?
He'll still be in passing.
The ocean. Have a motion, Commissioner Steel, we have a second. Second, Commissioner Rollup, number six, four, Mr. Branson, four. I made a comment, very, very thankful to have Tim taking care of our kids.
I mean, we're looking at way, we're looking at way to have one, every building, but right now, we can only, one in the high school, one in the middle school, and one, we have to move back and forth, but we're trying to do that grand, where we can have one station all day long, every day, which is not a bad thing.
Next item on the agenda, you're doing your report. For the water, we have three twenty-seven, five fifty-three, sixty, lactate, two seventy, sixteen, one twenty-three.
Sewer, we built one thirty-three, two thirty-seven eighty-six, collected one oh nine, four fifty-three thirty. Bass, we built three oh one, seven thirty-six twenty, collected two twenty-two, seven seventy-two sixteen. And with the garbage, we built twenty-five thousand, oh ninety-four-eight, collected twenty-six, six forty-eight fifty-eight.
So when we collect really close to a hundred percent on garbage, that's just residential, correct? And those are part of residential water bills. People aren't paying partial, right? They're paying the entirety. So when we kind of lag on collections without knowing the specifics, obviously, I would be fair to say that most of the ones we lag on collections are commercial customers or it's not quite correlation.
Well, no, with the water.
But it's not garbage, we're collecting roughly ninety-five percent of our garbage. That would make it like we're collecting roughly ninety-five percent of our residential water.
Oh, this is a lag.
Right, but that may be an impossible question to answer, but I just didn't know if kind of, okay. Right.
That's just residential, all that I do.
Yeah, and so, yes, I guess my, my thing is if we're collecting roughly ninety percent of our residential garbage, those are part of water bills and so they're paying their water at the same time unless they're splitting up. So we're, so we're, I mean, they're paying part of the bills, because if not, then the larger lag is mostly represented, I would imagine, in commercial bills.
We've had a lot of flings and that has probably led us to water usage, well, still, probably thirty-five percent of what we're seeing on our water system is actually to the lines back and get things back to the service level. It's, it's not as bad as it looks. We use it, we process it, it's helpful.
Does this line affect the union up there?
Not, I've had some breaks on these things, had a couple of things, okay.
Yep. So far.
State's working on that spot, they have one right back up in the area. We still have each lane just outside the city limits, which is still, we're not, we're not.
They don't have the water, that you talk about Christian, it's not on.
And all the things kind of, it's everywhere, not just here.
But on why we report, which is, I mean, and I made service roll, I would go about one mile, two thirty-five miles in one direction, thirty-five, thirty-six in the other, so you go seventy miles one mile. And that's our base problem with city. And with the sales of that property, we talked about this, I don't know, commission almost six years ago, for about doing a complete quadrize. Now we have the money and we have all the contracts, the, the, and because if we can get our water supplies situated, you know, plants over, we don't have no penalty. And people get here safe in the city, but you know, if we want to get water to Westwood, one way to get water to Buckhorn, you know, we got those networks on the process. And then when we do the strategic plan, everybody said, oh, if you think you're well, I mean, if you really want to be part of the city, you know, one of those committees in the city, because if we can get the water thing done, then it frees up to do other things for the city. Thanks, Mark.
Water could be posted in third and fourth.
We've not had a bad witness.
We've made strides.
We're, 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 we've done, we've done, we've done.
We prepared a lot of new initiatives, I have a bunch of things, almost capacity. We were fortunate, I know it's a big problem for those folks that went without one of those two hundred and fifty homes, but my father and my family did that and they still have to go. It was just an isolated property, we had one small area there on six ninety-nine where you shouldn't have, that did it. We worked well with the county, on this, they helped us on supplying water from the other, the hospital.
And then we provided water to the people that lived from the city, I mean, magistrates and county judges helped, whatever, but we didn't do that, we approached it, forty-five.
Park report. I'm the mayor, City Mayor for the city. Hazard Park Park sign, six hundred and dollars, three months down. Station one, twenty-six, fire pile, station two eleven. Station one had sixteen, has been called, station two had, other activities included. Attending the areas for instance, they assisted the fire drills at Hazard Middle School and O D, continued work on all of those three plans. Held up fire by the meeting area, well, friends member hopes that three days' kids are wearing a seminar, a seminar at the friends and hospital. Assisted with a fire drill, Prairie County Library, and they have a, they have a fire park, which is a price of eighteen thousand, all the work. And we would like to, the park, our house, like, thanks, the city, and the city.
But I talked to the third commissioner, I talked to the one. Thanks.
I'm the mayor, Commissioner, Mr. City Manager, monthly reports, January two thousand nineteen is called, one thousand one hundred and eight costs for services, one hundred and sixty-two votes, assists ninety-six business escorts, one hundred and twenty-six accidents, cars, sixty alarms, boxes, and forty-six accidents, total of two hundred and eight citations. You can see what they were cited for. Criminal case activity, thirty-five criminal cases, sixteen felony, eighteen misdemeanor. We had twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars in eighteen, it's stolen, recovered forty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. So we recovered a car from another accident that it entered. So our recovery rate is better than our, so, since forty-six accidents, five engine producing, one was DUI related, no fatal accidents, six citations issued. One thing we did start this month is, I'll let you look at that little thing, it's a drug seizure type chart that just shows you some of the different things that we seized over the last month. The biggest concern on that is if you look towards the bottom of this, the eighty purple Mexican Xanax is, is our life for fentanyl. I have that one officer that's had to be transported to the hospital for cause of this at the station. Also, highlight the month, J J Montgomery and Jimmy Perkins graduated, Department of Criminal Justice, trying to very technical, fortunately, to get them back. And as of right now, we have Daniel Rhodes, Jake Eversole, Brandon Gibson, Marcus Prater in Decatur. Three weeks in Decatur, yes. And we help with, uh, Dr. Marcus King, observations, about any incidents, if you have any questions on the way back.
And I like, try to be all ready to do that. And I talk to your office all the time too, okay? What you guys talk about down on the street, tell me, and it's drug, it's a problem.
It's the cheapest drug on the street.
And they can make it through any ingredient.
They don't have to make it more. I mean, it's the chief that's bringing it in from, you know, out of country, you know, but, you know, you buy it five hundred dollars, you're getting so much bid, you're making twenty-eight hundred dollars off of it. So, I mean, it's everywhere.
On the drug seize, kind of, with the mayor. So when you have like thirty point seven five on opiates and, you know, one seven nine point seven five unknown, are those like individual pills? Is that, what is that?
Yeah, that's pills, that's pills is what it is. The unknown down there, we could probably tell you what those are just from experience, but we'd rather wait for the lab to come back and say this is what it is a hundred percent for, to those numbers down. But I was just interested on how much we actually was taking in, eleven baggies there, you know, and that goes from month to month, usually about that, sometimes greater, sometimes less, but that is probably the main.
And I know you all go to those conferences, though, and we talk about this, but every county around this city are having the same.
Yeah.
Where you all come up with a plan, I mean, you know, having, I mean, having conflict.
But, you know, basically what we're doing right now, just kind of saturate these areas where we know what's happening at and stop at traffic stops or whatever, or tips, whatever we get, I know.
I know that the last meeting, you did, you did, and I think you guys do that, I don't.
Zero, maybe, one.
But it's all.
It's all drugs.
It's impaired, I mean.
Does that include the DUI this month?
Yes, yes, that folks, I think we did have one out of this one, which was really surprising.
That's the first one, we've had in two years.
First one in about two years that we've had and, you know, we're not seeing.
I read their report, right?
We're not seeing opioids or anything like that, not like just being down in some of these other counties, you know, different kinds of drugs that's hitting others, but we are seeing the fentanyl.
Well, it's the same thing as in the hospital. I mean, it's the same thing, I mean, if you're saying that it's in the city, it's sixty to a hundred, you go see, there's no way with all the technology and stuff, it's going to happen.
We didn't have meds for probably close to ten or twelve years, it was London, or they couldn't penetrate that prescription drug while, and now, you know, the prices just dropped out of it, and meds, drugs, chores, we got them, costing.
I like, I like that part.
And I've been asked before, but is there a brief description of what North Middle and South actually represent when people see this report?
Yeah, the south end would be.
South is both there.
Both there down to the Shell Bar, and then the middle section is from the Shell Bar out through Walker Town and the north end is out around the hospital.
Thank you.
Eighty, the purple Mexicans, Xanax, one Mac.
That's first, that's first down.
Well, you know, coffee provides road protection, that's all the DEA has, which they've not even seen in London yet, on, you know, figure Xanax than what is normally prescribed in America, so they are fentanyl laced. No, no, fentanyl, you know, fentanyl, car fentanyl is actually animal tranquilizer. You talk to J J Baker, J J's used car fentanyl, elephant tranquilizer. And, you know, my officers that went down with us the other day, was glued, touched his little back and still.
Thanks, Mark. Before we adjourn, although, as I said, we won't start doing this, because, you know, a lot of times, you know, people just come in, just like, and just, hey, and we'll just tell you a few things that we've tried to get going on. Anybody, like, trails, you want on the gym, just call there and you want to help with you, that's all you're doing. But like Dan explained about the stage, just like two minutes, of course, we said you got the drawings out here, full of empathy, and you're going to build a camp here, and I'll say it all, if you still wanted it, I think we've built four of the stages.
Okay. At the theater stage and, yeah, we have other, we tried to get the, well, I haven't looked at the.
The dogs figure the horses.
I got an email this afternoon from the instructional engineer, so I should be able to apply that information to hydraulics, to support that, to size and memories and everything, get the trusses and columns and so forth out to the, through contractor, to the steel, steel fabricator, get prices, then we'll be moving on with the stage, I mean, with the canopy.
Then we'll build four of the stage that you can transport to the county fair or to the triangle, third, a third field on the triangle. I mean, and it's, while I say the backdoor committee, we don't have to bring that, they don't have to rent all of the paperwork, stage or anything, but I mean, I'm sure it's a place for a week. But, so we get that tomorrow, it's a bit tentative, about June thirty, right? Thanks.
Thankfully, Bishop, you're nicely.
And then you all just had the code enforcement meetings up there.
Correct.
And we got the abandoned buildings, we're going to attack that, I mean, try to, I mean, all the way you can play it up, the city, I mean, people say, don't do anything, I mean, we're going to try to do the best we can do, that's all we can do if you, we got the abandoned buildings, we got to deal with them, we got to get them toward that, I mean, and you got to start with one at a time, you know, you talk about it all you want to, until you start tearing them down, it doesn't do any good, so.
Right now, we're about forty-five ahead of time.
So there's forty-five, so we need to come back, the next thing, we need a timeline of when they're going to be gone or what, because that's the only way you play it up, is do it. And I know some of them tied up in forty-seven hours and stuff like that, we got to figure out where they are and get that, that's, like, that's those two things. Also, we have, that's not, I stand, we have that strategic plan, we got the grant, and I know this, maybe it's been here, the envision group, we tried for years to get this strategic plan, and we're actually making me a maximum move down at Lexington, and it's a pretty good deal. I mean, it really promotes cities, but it's not these five people are figures or people work for the city that you all, that need to get involved in it. We're going to be with high school groups from Perry Central, Hazard, well, they said not, it's too far out. And then there's all these different groups that it's, it's a nine-month process of what, where our city is, where we're going to go, and how we're going to get there. So I think that's pretty impressive. One thing that I'm adamant about, trying to help more people as much as I can, and, you know, sometimes other things up here will make people mad and we're sorry, but we're going to try to do what's best for the city. But we've located trolley, I don't know if we can afford them yet or not, but we're working on a deal, and all the little kids love trolley, and I'm not saying that a few reuses, but my vision is strong, and we will try to go down there in about four weeks, just hopefully. But you all remember back, I don't think, I mean, when was the last time Hazard had a sit bus? I sort of envision these trolleys as the city buses, they have two, and you run, you know, from a certain time to a certain time, and it's a minimal fee, a dollar a day, dollar a day, fifty cents, whatever, and it's not going to have people to sit on all day long. I know people will say that, we're not going to do that, if we can make it work, and we'll start, not going to be low there, you know, but they're around, and you take people to the doctor, to Walmart, to restaurants to eat, or to, I mean, we have no lottery match, you know, in the city limits, you know, I think the only lottery we have is out, how many people we woke up to. But you think about a lot of people who don't have transportation, and what made me think about this, is, is on that, is we have a lot of kids graduating from our hospital, they're eighteen years old, they never had to worry about transportation, they've ridden the bus their whole life, but, you know, as soon as they graduate, there's nothing about getting back on that bus, so, yeah, you know, you might have to wait a little bit, but if it ran to the community college and dropped you off, you know, if it ramped all day long, you know, you might have to sit there for an hour of what you can study, but it's coming back to get you. And, you know, you shouldn't have to pay fifteen or twenty dollars to go to the grocery store to get your groceries for this money. And I think anything that we can do as a city to provide a service for people, and not only, I'm talking about just, I mean, it'd be nice for us to ride the trolley, I mean, and it'd make, and it would make us a little bit different than, say, London or Park, Bull, probably, they don't have that, why can't we do that?
If we had that once before.
We had trolleys, but it wasn't like this right here, and we also had wooden trolleys, and that wasn't for cover, and they rotted, so we're going to try to get some metal. We're looking at trying to secure funding for the end of town down here in that triangle, where we could put the farmer's market over in this back park a lot, where you could have the big canopy all the way down through there, and, you know, the farmer market is good, rotates places, but if you could have that, then, you know, I think it's just once every two weeks or something like that, but then that whole area would be open up, it's picking shelves and stuff, one way you can get people downtown is we build it and get them down here, you know, we talked about it all we want to, but we have to be the ones to do it, let's keep it here, so.
Yeah, so that's the strategic plan, March nineteenth, from six o'clock to eight o'clock is the public meeting where anyone who lives here want, if you want to come and help shape what that thing is going to be, what the goals for the city are, if you think the city will be here to administer that, we would invite everyone to that and encourage you to bring friends.
Now, we have the hospital.
And this will be advertised both social media and social media.
You haven't heard the last.
And then, you know, we talked about what we're trying to do, like the city courts, someone had made a request that the city courts be named after, probably first or second best basketball player in Hazard history, Jim Rumpf, and we're going to try to get those painted, with Dust on the starting, that have dedication to that right there, and then someone said, about this player, the next year, this basketball player, this on the bench, on that ball play, we'd name that first, and, and we, I guess we should put this on agenda, I would say what things people talked about, that someone wanted to, right there, where Rusty Muncie retired as Admiral Colonel.
General.
But, you know, in that road in between, city police station, you know, the, the connector, I don't know what it's called, but I mean, it's actually called Rusty Muncie Way, which is mainly on that service station right across from that little park, but, you said we're going to try to, you know, and some of the things. and some of the things, the policy, you know, everything's not naked, you know, it is naked when you don't have water, that's the fact of it. It is naked when we have flood or slide, but, you know, I think we're up here to try to do the best job we can, and anybody wants to get on the agenda, anytime, you're welcome.
I'd like to say one thing, Johnny Cox, Oliver, that you, we have an argument, May twenty-third, that Saturday night.
Yeah, he, he gets on, in the TCC tournament, too, that's why we be kind of safe.
Yeah, again, if you look back at that work, you can, we got to do our part to the faith community, so one thing I want to ask you, or ask, um, one thing I want to ask you, the city tonight, is what is one need that you would like for faith community to be praying for this month?
I could ask, I mean, I've got an answer for myself, but I'll go about these people.
Uh, uh, go ahead.
I'll just talk about the needles and our kids, and the drug, I mean, you know, we cleaned up twenty-seven bags of garbage right here, and at least, I mean, needles through that, I mean, it was a real one, you know, and we're trying to get our kids to do kayaks and all this stuff, but do you really want them to walk on the river until you get it cleaned up? I mean, that was one of our best.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna be praying for that, I'm gonna get the word out, the faith community, through Minister of Fellowship, um, and.
And another thing I want to say before you all that, and we appreciate and value your opinion, too, I mean, I think that's what the government's about. Everybody has a right to stand up and voice their opinion, and we appreciate it.
I want, I really want you to think about, each month, you can see in my face, each month, I'm gonna comment what, what you need, just, just want to pray for.
Your coffee.
Also, we can do it right for us.
Right.
Right for us.
Yes, yes.
You got some cider? No, I thought, I thought you got a coffee.
No.
There's a coffee. Let's pray. Grace and simply, Father, thank you for all that's come this way tonight, I pray that you go with all this vineyard to their homes, that are for places to be, Father, to provide your protection over, Father, always, continue to be with our city, with our city council, our mayor, be with all the city employees as they go about their business, and may it all be for your glory, in Jesus' name, amen.